Good evening. It's 7:01 and we'd like to get the meeting going here. I thank you all for coming. And at this time, I'll call the meeting a special meeting to order and ask everybody to keep rising, going to push. Again, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Cook, our former commissioner in the audience. Thank you for attending, and uh, let me turn off the lights. I'd just like to thank all of the firefighters and the EMS that are present and that are not here. Thank you for your service to our county. I appreciate it. I know we all appreciate it, especially if we're needing some assistance. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Davidson to sort of lead the discussion.
Just to give a little bit of background about how the county became involved, we were requested for some ARPA funds for two different projects in the county. And one is for Hospital District Number One, and the other is for Fire District Two. And at this time, I'd just like to basically do an introduction to Shirley Jones here, who is working hard on administering those ARPA funds. There's a lot of rules and regulations involved with those if you're doing an actual job and making sure that we stay audit compliant with those. So Shirley, you want to raise your hand, so it's sort of clear there. And so that got us kind of involved, and that's when we became aware of a situation in Fire District Two that they had lost the credential because of various reasons. Most of it was their fault. They lost the ambulance service. The ambulance had been sold to Pasco, to Fire District Three, I think. And there's not the services in that part of the state. And so we started inquiring about that and trying to inquire from the standpoint that maybe there's something that the county could do to help coordinate, something that we could do to help alleviate that situation. And we were made aware of the mutual aid agreement that was in place, and we're made aware of the good work that both Hospital District One does and Fire District Three in all of state responding to that area to attend to a lot of those calls. There's a lot of important emergency work that goes on up there with Loose Falls Park, where we had some major issues happen up at that area. Plus, I'd remind everybody that the road that commutes to WSU goes through that area, which kind of heightens a little bit of awareness of risk from all of us, that we've got students going to and from college on that road that passes through the district. And so it just kind of made us aware of it, so we started talking to individuals about if there's something that we could do. And I think that we started several different initiatives and several different things. And so at this time, for the sake of time, I'd just like to start running through those. The very first thing we did is that we were made aware that Coyote Ridge facility is utilizing Hospital District One's services far more than they did in the past, to the point where it's getting to where nothing like that would ever have been anticipated when the first Coyote Ridge first came here. And so we helped facilitate some coordination and some effort to reach our legislators. And we approached them for two different things. We approached them for additional funding for Coyote Ridge, and also if there would be an amount from the parks, the state parks, that would set up a fund that all the districts respond to those issues that happened occasionally at Loose Falls could be reimbursed to individual districts. And at this time, I hate to put him on the spot, but Chief Ken Wolfenden, I got that last name right, didn't I? Wolfenden, would you mind coming up and giving a report about, we contacted our local representative and he can kind of provide you an update about where we're at with that?
Just what I'd like to say is Representative Joe Schmick and Senator Mark Scheffler have both been very accepting of our request to let Department of Corrections as well as State Parks join in to help pay for some of the expenses that has incurred with the Hospital District over the years that we've been in. We're hoping for more than we're probably actually going to see, but at least feelers are out there, and I do appreciate the help that they're providing. So if I might ask you, you actually went back and found the records that stated that we were only to be probably one call a month.
That's correct. One to two calls a month was the initial projection. And currently, where are we averaging a month? We're averaging two and a half calls a week. We're dealing with ambulance service that had volunteered and a levy that can't support. We're asking our legislators to assist us.
Because the first thing that we got was pushback from them, and they said, well, we paid an amount that went to the state of Ponderay that was supposedly for this service, and so, sorry. And this guy being modest, his finding that original estimation that would be a call far fewer than there are now, actually got the debate going again, because we could see that we're in a different realm now. And so, being a real little bit modest, saying that document was going to be saved today and saved this session.
We're actually hoping for an ongoing assessment from Department of Corrections, but it's possible that it's setting up maybe all of it. And we've been told also to shed some more light on it, that our governor is turning Coyote Ridge into a very epic prison. He's actually sending older prisoners there, which is going to prove more of a response for us to serve at that Coyote Ridge facility. So we are going to fight for relief from this. Thank you.
Just a last update about that is that the amount that we're trying to obtain for Loose Falls does not look as promising this legislative session, that we will continue to work hard on it, apart with getting some pushback and saving up this, you know, something about they have a buy-in budget, a few of budgets, and they're wanting us to pull aside more of their budgeting, because they say they're out of money. So we'll continue to try to work hard on that issue, try to get a lump sum. And the initial amount that we've asked for, Ken, do you remember what that amount was that we asked for three calls? So that, we felt that that was very reasonable, and there's a lot of work done on history of calls to justify that, and there's not a lot of good acts, but it shouldn't be much easier than we continue to work hard. So then, we continued to work with meeting with different fire districts and talk about this issue. And we had meetings recently with a chief of fire department. Oh, there he is. And that's when we talked about, he actually brought us some new concepts of things that maybe could help us with the situation. So I think at this time, it'd be appropriate to go from Mike and our hospital and county values, EMS levy.
Good evening, and thanks for having me. You guys here in Ponderay? I'm not that busy. I'm prepared to. I only made silly copies of this, because I knew that this was just going to be a small turnout. So at least everybody, you know, I do have a couple extras, you know, if you're really interested. So I'm going to go through, walk through a, kind of, EMS levy, that's a county-wide levy to support emergency medical services. And so I did some research online, I talked to some other fire chiefs that have county-wide or even Fire District EMS levies that are at forty to fifty cents per thousand assessed value, and it strictly funds emergency medical services, separate from fire anything else. And so the numbers I have are preliminary, so nothing is set in stone. This is not exactly how the numbers are going to look, there's just some swags that I went through based on assessments. So the first thing is, is kind of the history of emergency medical services in Franklin County. So I mean, right now, we're at ninety-six thousand population and growth with the, and Pasco, the city of Pasco is the eighth fastest growing city in the, as it said, by population and growth. So we're having to collect what we can, both in levies for fire districts and hospital districts, or take all the tax dollars and include the city, just to fund that both ambulance service and fire service. So when I met with Commissioner Vidier and Dwayne Davidson, I, you know, we just talked about this idea, what about an EMS levy that's countywide? I don't think, you know, we're probably one of the few counties out of the thirty-nine that don't collect a special levy, just the EMS, distributed to countywide. So when I looked at the Department of Revenue of Washington State, and what I found out was that there are three counties out of thirty-nine that don't have any EMS levy. So it's us, Garfield, and Ponderay. And Ponderay County doesn't run an ambulance service, they have a private full profit. Blue Court Ambulance covers paramedic services for all Ponderay County. And then Garfield, it was hard to decipher through the Department of Revenue, if Garfield, Hospital District funds Garfield One, or if Garfield runs a staffing ambulance out of their general levy amount. But the rest of the county, all of them have EMS levies, they're either countywide or are on top of what the fire districts levy, and they take it above their standard levy. And so out of that, from the Department of Revenue, currently there are one hundred and eighty-four EMS levies in the thirty-nine counties. Either countywide or individual fire protection districts are running levies. And so the average EMS levy rate is thirty-nine cents per thousand assessed value. So they are anywhere from thirty-five to a full fifty cents. And under the statute, you cannot see fifty cents for any EMS levy, that's the law. And then EMS levies bought in four hundred and forty-one million dollars across the state last year to support EMS across the thirty-nine counties and the multiple fire districts. So like I said in my note here, Franklin, Garfield, Ponderay currently don't have EMS levies or operating under EMS districts. And then just to, I included in the packet, just kind of a quick history of, you know, we really only have three services in Franklin County for the population and area we cover. City of Pasco runs five stations, including a fifth, with advanced life support and each of its stations, with their twenty-four-seven paramedic. And Fire District Three runs two ambulance services. One's for both the intermediate life support, so they're not quite paramedic level, but we're between the EMT and the paramedic, we're licensed on both our ambulances, we're staffed twenty-four-seven now. We used to just be strictly volunteer. Within the last five years, we've had to change our model because of the demand on system, the growth, and the number of calls we were getting. We are now at twenty-four-seven, same staffing model, two shifts on, two-day run, and then a four-day off, with our main station being staffed, three sixty-five holidays we do. And then they've got the Hospital District, which covers a good majority of the north counties, except for Franklin County Three, Pasco, and Franklin Two, and they run strictly, like you said, push-to-duty, all volunteer. And their call number is actually, per year, really comparable to us. If we're at eight hundred and four calls a year, close to nine hundred, they're right behind us with seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and forty-seven calls per year, and that's strictly admin, where we're doing fire, rescue, and EMS. So if I go back and took a look at how this would work, so the first thing is, under the RCW, which is included in the packet, thirty-six, that point three-two-point-four-eight is, a county would have to form a emergency medical services. So it would be through the commissioners, and by resolution, you'd form a district. And then once you form an emergency medical services district, then that is by, under the RCW, is the avenue then to go out to the voters to request an EMS levy that is countywide, and it's managed by the, by Franklin County. So the commissioners are ultimately responsible for collecting the levy amounts and then distributing them out using a formula. Most counties have a, either a part-time or a full-time EMS coordinator. Walla Walla County has somebody who works for the county, and is responsible for the intergovernmental government agreements, for all the fire districts and cities, managing the funds, so the funds are given to the EMS coordinator by the board, and then they are distributed out to the fire districts and to the city of Walla Walla. So that's one model that I took a look at. So it's not really managed, it wasn't by us, it's managed by the county. And so just running some preliminary numbers, at the whole fifty cents per thousand, I took the top end. And I broke it apart with two assessed values, so everything's based on a per-thousand-dollar assessed value. The first one is Franklin County at about three billion, just using the packet booklet, and then eight billion with the city of Pasco. And so the combined is eleven billion dollars of assessed value within the county. So then if we took fifty cents, and we went out to the voters and asked for fifty cents per thousand, or somewhere around that ballpark, you can't see that, where we can go thirty to forty to fifty cents, then that would bring in a budget annually of five million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars as a ballpark. And the distribution part is where it gets muddy, where you have to make, almost have a consultant or somebody to help you with it, because the first thing I took off the top of it was, the city of Pasco, with their assessed value of eight billion, that fifty cents is about four million dollars just to support ALS availability within the city of Pasco, which is about a million and a half shorter than what they plan annually off of their utility. So if they're, and they can speak to that better, Dr. Chan and Chief Beer, but if, I think if they're sixteen twenty-four per month per household off of the water meter on their water bill, that brings in a revenue of about five point five million just on ambulance availability alone. And then that's to put the paramedic units in the five stations and staff with paramedics and firefighters. And then the demand piece is built back through a third party, the transport miles and the expendable items. So just to keep the city of Pasco with four and fifth station, you have to have five million. So I use Walla Walla County, and then I use, I want to say Grace Harbor County. I use their formula to kind of come up with how the county could distribute the five billion dollars annual budget or revenue off of the EMS levies. And I just use a percentage for each of the agencies, based on assessed value, their population, and their call volume. And then each one is weighted as a percentage towards our totals of the volume. We have a total assessed value at thirteen billion, have a hundred and eight thousand plus people, up to ninety-seven hundred thousand, thirty-eight thousand, and then about ten thousand two hundred and fifty seats called between all the fire agencies. If I broke that up into a percentage and weighed it out equally using Walla Walla County's model, and the five million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand give or take budget would be distributed accordingly, a hundred and fifty thousand would be for admin, so you'd have to hire an EMS coordinator, there's going to be some office supplies, there's going to be some indirect costs to manage the EMS program. Then four million would go to the city of Pasco, would be the dollar, the fifty cents based on their assessed value, which is still, like we said, we have to, as I said in the sheet here today, how do we address the shortfall, because they're already eleven million five million. Then to break it apart, every fire district would actually receive a portion of the EMS levy. And that would either, that would help support emergency medical responders, EMTs, whether they're in an ambulance or if they're in a wildfire engine responding ahead of the ambulance, which would provide, help them provide training and equipment, and help offset their levies if they're already levying for fire protection. Because really under RCW fifty-two, we collect revenue off of our assessment for really the fire. We don't have to provide EMS, which is something we do out of our budget and a lot of other fire districts. Hospital District is really doing a, definitely strictly set aside for ambulance service. But going through, using that formula, Ponderay Fire Department, if they were to participate, would get eleven thou, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars extra in their budget. The Hospital District would be at six hundred and six thousand dollars a year. Fire District One would get a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. District Two would get an extra twenty-seven thousand. District Three would get five hundred and fifty-five thousand. District Four out of Basin City, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then District Five, ninety-nine thousand, the shy of a hundred thousand annually, is how we would break it apart. And of course, if the assessed value goes up, the revenue might go up as well. So that's how it would be annually, and each participating agency would have to have an intergovernmental agreement with the county. So for example, and I can pick on that, Steve Cook or Daniel's here, if District Four doesn't want to get into responding and having their wildfire engines responding with the ambulance and training their guys at first aid or EMR, or even do car wrecks with execution, off completely out of it, they don't have to sign an intergovernmental agreement, they would participate, they wouldn't receive any funds. And everybody who receives funds from the breakdown of the state annually would have an intergovernmental agreement, and that would spell out what the execution was. It don't have to be EMTs and paramedics that have to respond to every medical call, they don't have to have an ambulance housing their station. But in Walla Walla and some other rural counties, they're just supporting what ambulance is giving us, to get there first, provide drivers, provide extra manpower on the scene of a motor vehicle accident, help with execution, and they would have the funds to do that training and buy the, like, technical equipment, and some of the equipment on those apparatus and stuff, so our cars can support that mission. So before I just kind of wrap up, any questions then on kind of how, you know, if we did a dollar fifty, why, how that would look financially for the fire districts? And it would really kind of offset the Hospital District, or Franklin Three, or even the city of Pasco, for it to cover basically countywide, because we could all, we could set up that shared system, even rely on mutual aid, rather than Fire District Two. District Two would have the funds to run, have somebody in a pickup or a wildfire engine ahead of us, and we could, we would have those funds countywide, and the agreement would be laid out as such, where one or two or three of the different departments could be dispatched countywide and not be carried out, versus relying on the, not to be so late agreement we have now, which is basically a legal handshake that allows them to fund and to pull out the football set, back them up, you know, it would be mutual, you have to be something in return from District Two, four, one, and that will help us, we have that. So then, so moving forward, just some thoughts, and these are just some questions, and Chief Beer and I kind of left these with somebody who were from, from him, the Office of the city of Pasco. So the first one is, if we collect a fifty cents per thousand at our max level, with five hundred and seventy-one million dollars in, a million and five, then how would we offset the city of Pasco's utility? So and I think Walla Walla City does something different than some other bigger cities, just for the availability of guaranteed ALS and that life support paramedic twenty-four seven. We haven't looked that out yet, but I know that there, there will be a difference of about one million six hundred and eight thousand between what the city would get off of fifty cents per assessed value of their city of value versus what we would collect.
Excuse me, you invited questions, so I'll give you one.
Okay, go ahead.
That seems like the right point. Why not just exclude the city of Pasco, let them continue to do their current levy, which keeps them at their five point seven million, and do what you're talking about on the balance of the county? In that way, you don't have any backfill if you have to pay Pasco, and Pasco doesn't have any reduced revenue. I don't know that they have to be included, but I'm not certain that we could exclude them either, but if you take them out, they still get their four, five, point seven, and that leaves you the balance of one six eight eight, which is all the numbers that you put in the packet.
I actually ran that number without this in the packet, a budget sheet to show that. It does increase a little bit. I think there are some, you did have some questions on, if you ran a county-wide levy and included everybody in the, outside the city of Pasco, and what does that do with the city of Pasco for them running the people's levy? Or is some question that I didn't have to have reported? That is, that is an option I ran, talking to Chief Beer. I excluded them and put the entire budget amount into, divided up from the fire district to the county.
And I appreciate that, and I'm just looking at it, saying, by including the city, you dramatically reduce the revenue that comes out of the city, and the county then has to backfill a million plus to make Pasco whole. If you simply leave them out, they have more revenue, you have at least as much, if not more. I think you have exactly the same. If you just give that some thought, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and on the page where it says the countywide EMS levy, I separated them out, so the city of Pasco at eight billion. If we did not include the city, then we would just base it on Franklin County's assessed value alone, and so the budget would be a million six eight eight, which would then be divided, using the same formula based on the percentages, through the, by fire districts and the hospital.
Well, let's go ahead and use your numbers then. The countywide EMS levy, please. It shows the total valuation, assessed valuation, Franklin County is the three point three seven, city of Pasco is the eight billion, and you've done a very nice job of laying out exactly what the fifty cent levy return is on those. When you glue them together, you get five point seven for the whole county, including the city. Out of that, you've got to give four point something back to the city for their fees, plus you've got to give them another million out of the county fees.
Yeah.
To make them whole. You know, the totals, five point seven two one, with both of them together, and you know, if you just let the city continue to do their own thing, it lets the county keep the full one point six eight eight. If you don't, by your numbers, you've got to backfill the city a million plus, so that means you're giving them just a stretch over, over five. And you'd be cutting the county fees down to five hundred thousand for the whole county.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, you know, it's a serious question, not kind of difficult, if the law allows, I think it does, and I'm not an expert here, to exclude them, seems like everybody agrees. If the county ends up with normal, the city retains their current levy amount, okay? The county ends up with normal, the city retains their current levy amount, but, you know, thank you.
Yeah, that, that was, uh, one of the questions that you had on as well. It does, it doesn't put as much money out, but it does have at least one point six million out there levied in. If we divide that equally, using the same formula, the math.
You're absolutely right. And if you, if you include the city, you've got to give up a million of that one point six to backfill Pasco. So then the county's left with about five or six hundred thousand. Whereas if you leave the city out, the county walks away with one point seven.
The other question was timing other than EMS levy on the dollar at Pasco. You know, do you obviously have some homework to do and how we would market it and get buy-in across the, the county? But would the timing be, you know, twenty twenty-four? How would we, you know, present time? There's a lot of questions we're going to have after. If people are going to ask, what is this going to cost? You know, I've got the big picture number, but you know, per household, what is this going to cost for ambulance service? And what does that do in the North County? Does that do in Florida fifty-two for day levy and everybody else, uh, levy some money? How does that support them for, uh, EMS? Uh, timing of assessment annual payment. So when, when does the county assess the EMS levy? When do the payments go out in the fire districts and hospital district was a, a question. We have to have homework done, have a packet, uh, ready. Do we do a six-year, ten-year or a permanent EMS levy? Typically, you run a six-year levy, it expires. And then you have to back out to the voters to re-up the, uh, six-year levy for number six. You can also do a ten-year EMS levy and some places are even a permanent. So there's always going to be a fifty cent or whatever that number is per thousand EMS levy on the books. See in Franklin County to support emergency service, if you do a permanent levy. And what are the consequences if we fail? What if we go to the voters and they say no? It fails on a six-year levy of fifty cents a thousand. Then what do we do? We still, we haven't fixed any of the problems for ambulance coverage of countywide. And so that's, uh, something to think about. It does require a sixty percent super majority to pass. We have to have the voter turnout as well as the positive votes, that fifty percent or more. We have to have voters turnout. Um, we, um, there'll be some accounting and some state auditor requirements. This, uh, hospital district, all the fire districts will have to separate out their regular levy versus EMS levy, uh, in their budget. And when they do their reporting to the state auditor, so those will have to be kept separate as well as the county will have to, if, if what comes in and what goes out. And then, uh, if we do a countywide levy and this probably goes back to you, to Mr. Tex comment about the city of Pasco, whether they don't jump in doing their water utility is we do have to have, uh, seventy-five percent of the, uh, cities that are located in the county to also buy in. So like we said, at Basin City and Pollo D, they would have to have buy-in at the voter level because they are cities within fire districts. Uh, so the city of Pasco would carry more weight for us, but if they're out of it, we would have to really solid within the, uh, smaller incorporated cities that we, uh, protect and, and the fire districts.
Quick question. Is it seventy-five percent of the cities or seventy-five percent of the population living in the cities? Of the cities? Okay, that's helpful for us.
Yeah, and then this was the other, uh, uh, this was that final question you had is if you did a countywide EMS, uh, levy, does that eliminate the city's availability for a levy? And that was a question that Chief Beer put on there and I wasn't sure if, you know, uh, what that question was. Okay. But actually, you know, kind of the moving forward, if this is, you know, something that county would like to form, you know, an EMS district and go start exploring it. And there's more homework to do. I would like to sit and provide, uh, any more information. Again, we have two relatively modest experts in the audience, not myself. Chief Beer, I would capture the information I can before he retires so that I can download this kind of, uh, information.
I'd just like to say thank you for all this hard work that you've put into this. And how did we get to this position is because of, uh, the art funds that we're distributing. And we've got some people that are wanting them. And then we found out that District Two doesn't have an ambulance and all these volunteers are getting fatigue and the prison, these calls, the ambulance went out to District Two. And we're having a hard time recruiting people to volunteer. And we're coming to the conclusion that we've got to start pulling up some money and get this kind of included so that we can increase the volunteers coming in. Because there's definitely a needed entity that we need out here in rural Franklin County.
Any more questions on the, to the boss?
Thank you for the, uh, handouts. This is great, um, information and I appreciate the hard work that you put into it. The only concern I see is, um, Franklin County Fire District Two is, um, is twenty-seven thousand. That's, uh, all the issue.
Now, there's just one funding formula. And we don't have to, we don't have to stick to that one. Because if it's based on assessed value, population and then full volume, then it does leave the fire district that doesn't have a lot of population and a lot of calls per year or even a lot of assessed value, it just hit that enough.
I think that there's a lot of people that obviously call. If they live in that area, I want to see something that solves the issue. So yeah, there's, there's a, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll just second, I think it's great information. I think Mission Mall makes an excellent point that you can't do this on a linear scale and have it work. There's got to be some consideration for, you know, you've got a smaller tax base and it's not really helping with things.
I wanted to thank, uh, Chief Harris, uh, invited him to the courthouse the other day and said, is there something the county can be doing to help? And he said, well, yeah, you're one of the only counties that don't. And it's like, I, I pulled some wisdom a long time ago. You can never ask the question or don't already know the answer to. And that proved to be the point because he said, yeah, you're in a perfect position to be helping us out. And so thank you for the presentation that you've done on a very speedy way to do this recently, actually, eight years old. So, uh, thank you.
Chief Beer, you go. So I guess I want to start off by saying I, I don't want to sound like a greedy, but a million and a half is a million and a half. Um, so we've got to figure out, but on the other hand, we do have a problem. Um, that we, you know, quota problem is a problem. Um, it's even a bit of a problem for Pasco because we was, we provide paramedic service in the county a couple hundred times a year. And typically, and unfortunately, many of the people from county ridges, so we just get medical, you know, a hundred fifty dollars. Um, which doesn't come even close to, you know, what our actual costs are. Our actual cost, and we have the numbers done every year, our actual cost, uh, provided financial services, only three thousand dollars a fall. Um, and granted, as a, as a career offer agency, it's certainly my responsibility. Um, and, and I think the other fire chief here from Franklin County would agree that Pasco would try to do a lot to, to be of good influence. Do as much as you can to help out and, and as the agency that has a little more depth sometimes, especially during the week, getting in, calling through the hall, but we, uh, um, if you look at the Walla Walla County model, uh, just to kind of muddy your water a little bit more. Uh, Walla Walla provides funding to the city of Walla Walla to provide paramedic service in the county. And they provide funding to urban, Walla Walla Fire District Five provides paramedic service, twenty-four seven, which they're not able to do. So Walla Walla Fire District Five passes thirty-five, uh, approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand a year to the city of Pasco. And we guarantee them paramedic service on that end of Walla Walla County. Um, so when we talk about this, and, and really we've, we've got to do more, look at the whole picture. There's this basic life support service, which in reality, basic life support calls are about eighty-five percent of the calls. They won't be qualified. Somewhere in the ten to twenty percent of the range of calls, it really are the only number that needs paramedic level service. Um, so, you know, I don't know what the total call volume for medical calls are in the county. Um, but, um, really ten to twenty percent of those need paramedics. And, and we're responding to a couple hundred of those calls a year out of the city, um, because it's the last thing we do. So that's something that needs to kind of factor in this whole thing. Um, obviously at this point, um, the city, I, I don't believe that the council would support an EMS levy in the city. Um, because there are losses of revenue, having to make up that million and a half in, in revenue, some, some price else. Uh, I certainly support it in the county. Uh, and as an example, Mike pointed out that there isn't the, the obvious one is King County. King County has a countywide EMS levy for the city of Seattle. And that's by choice. Seattle runs their own medic program. King County runs a medic program for everywhere else, uh, uh, the, uh, EMS program, not just paramedic. You can run a basic life support, any kind of person, for the rest of the county out of that, uh, that program. So it's, it's certainly a program that can be put together, you know, it's not, it's allowed by OCGW to, to, you know, if the commission is chosen to coin it. Um, but on the other hand, I am very supportive of this request. Uh, it's a problem, we need to fix it. Um, the county's growing, uh, we're notonte, not to disparage just a small county, but we're not. And we're not getting smaller and, and having the prisons and the plans for the prisons is a problem for Conell. Um, typically in fire service planning, you have a volunteer station as an example. That number at five hundred is the point where you begin to staff us. That's, that's the burnout rate. That's the burnout rate for a volunteer fire station or EMS facility. And, uh, obviously, we're trying to fit that, that burnout rate. Um, and they can only go a few years at that burnout rate. If they're, they have to do something else. Whether that's date, we say only staffing, whatever staffing model that is, but, um, they have to do something. I don't know if there's any questions you have for the city, but, uh, that's basically where we're at. We're certainly supportive, but we're not able to give up a million and a half.
Chief, would you mind summarizing for us what these levies look like inside the city limits of Pasco and how they're broken out?
So what Pasco does to run ambulance services, cities are allowed to charge a rate. And it's, it's, there's no limit, minimum, maximum, charge a rate, um, called an ambulance utility. And typically use water meters as the point that we charge them. Um, you have to have something like an electric meter, a water meter, something that, that you charge your, your utility rate on. Um, and Pasco currently charges the utility rate in the city of, I'm going to guess, that is around seventeen. Thank you. This is our chief of planning and finance, so he knows the number right away. So sixteen sixty-six, seventeen years. Um, and that's charged for a water meter hookup at a single-family residence. We also then charge our high utilizers, what we call an equivalent residential unit. So if you're Mrs. Smith who's paying sixteen sixty-six a month and you might call an ambulance once in your life, um, you've paid that full sixteen sixty-six. But if you're a high utilizer facility, we have some facilities that are high utilizers that I won't name tonight, but that are high utilizers that we go through a hundred, two hundred times a year. And you've got to remember, we're running almost nine thousand calls. So, you know, we, we have some facilities. So as an example, with hotels, we use their seventy-five percent occupancy rate and then charge them a percentage of that. And Dr. Buckley, our finance director, it's essentially a, a percentage of that normal occupancy rate versus just a one sixteen sixty-six water meter rate. Um, so that's where we generate our revenue, which our ambulance revenue or ambulance expenditures, uh, run about eight or nine? Yeah, between eight and nine million this year, uh, just for the EMS side of the, of the fire department. And then there's another about nine million on the fire suppression side. So we're running an annual budget in the city for fire and ambulance services pushing twenty million a year.
And so if somebody's in the city and on a well that they pay this instead of street water connection?
There, people that are, yeah, they do. We, we, we did a purging of the records many years ago and, and tried to identify. And there, it was surprising, there are some buildings that we actually had had calls at that don't have water. And we had to figure out a way to, to capture them and charge the utility. For whatever reason, they did not have a water meter. Um, and then, you know, we found, when we went through the system, we found lots of places that had one water meter and seven or eight businesses.
But you're still able to tie that to the utility.
Mm-hmm.
You even know that there's no quota requirement.
Okay. Dr. Buckley's our finance director, so she knows a lot.
So that's, that's how you find them. I was, it was sounding like earlier that, you know, there was a statutory obligation for it to be connected to the utility service. But no, that's just a.
What we did a few years ago when we realized that we were probably under collecting is we took all the parcel numbers and all the PUD, uh, meters and all the gas meters in the city and all the water meters and fleshed that through and found where they did not match up. So that we could capture people that are not paying their utility.
We found out.
Is that sixteen sixty-six a month or a year?
A month, sixteen sixty-six a month. And we, that's what we call demand. And as, as we talk to you guys about this, you're going to hear these terms quite a bit. The two components of providing EMS service, one's availability and one's demand. Availability is having people available to go to the hall and having ambulances and having a ambulance station or a fire station that's there and ready to go. Uh, and, and having people staffed there, be it volunteers or, or first staff. And then there's the, the demand component. And typically on the demand side, we, we, for us, we're required by law to, uh, we, we do it about every two years. We do a rate study, uh, hire a private contractor and do a rate study of what the demand, uh, side should be, which tells us how much we should be charging, um, for that, uh, the actual delivery of services. So when we talk about how we're going to do stuff in the county, we've got to talk about availability, cost and demand.
So this is a one topic meeting. And if there's any public that would like to come up and speak on the EMS fire, feel free to do it at this time.
Evening, missionaries. I'm Steve Cooper, Fire Chief Franklin Four. And I suppose just a comment, um, I'm in an all-volunteer fire district. Uh, and I'm a volunteer there to, uh, to care for the town of Basin City. Us out here in North County mutually a lot, that's, there's almost no discipline. We help each other out. And I'll tell you, without the help of Bob Gear from Pasco Fire and Mike Eric from Franklin Three, we'd be in a world of hurt. I lean on those guys pretty hard. You know, they have specialized equipment and training and stuff like that. And I just don't think that extra five hundred thousand that we'll miss out on if we include them in would help us out. I would rather she's Pasco Fire did it, maybe Bob and Pasco Fire down there would think about, you know, I don't know, adding another, uh, fireman or fire truck or something. They take care of us now. And I know they get strapped when we're in a shit moment out here in the county, go break away and come help us. And we lean on them pretty hard. So I really think, uh, we need to think about taking the limits.
I'm Brian Hocken from Fire District Two. And I thank you for pointing out the small, not twenty-seven thousand, it's not, you know, here's the problem, guys see the problem. Another aspect that we need to look at that falls with this in mind, we can manage this through software. And I don't have the numbers off there, but you have to be, every, uh, emergency call that involves a hundred and eighty thousand people to visit, you know, a part that, the falls, involves, uh, medicine. Okay, so normal ambulance service probably isn't going to be the answer to the rural area next, uh, type situation, probably a sensation. And for the people that live in, uh, uh, District Two, you're probably all, all of us are probably members of this, uh, or. And for the people that live in, uh, uh, District Two, you're probably all, all of us are probably members of, uh, or, you know, so that's an extra cost. Usually, you know, civilians can do this out there. I pointed out that you guys see the problem, but part of the problem is this in time to get medicine service out there.
There was a lot of comments out there. Come on up to your mic, we want to hear from you.
Uh, terrifying question. Um, would this levy require Pasco District One to vacate their current agency center? Or would this be an addition to? And then has there been any discussion on what additional services we'll provide with this increase in, in the revenue? Is it more stations, more apparatus, paid staff, which is volunteers? Has that been discussed on how the service would be improved by this revenue?
I think it's enough that's.
Okay. And then the last thing I have is just a comment that it sounds like the greatest need is in two areas that are not taxpayers of the county. Which is unfortunate that we're kind of trying to fix this issue with Franklin County taxpayers. When the Blue's Falls incidents are from, you know, non-Franklin County residents, the lion's share. And you have the prison, which is non-taxpayers, um, generally from other areas of the state. So it is unfortunate that we're having to use Franklin County taxpayers to solve a non-Franklin County issue just based on proximity.
And I'd, I'd just like to add to that, Marcus, that, uh, the goodwill of the people of Franklin County, when I said, well, do we have to answer the calls to the prison? And they said, well, whether we have to or not, we're going to go. And that's the people that live in Franklin County. They're not going to deny anybody service and they won't deny it in full force. And where our District One and District Three are going out to District Two with their ambulances, they're covering. But they're getting fatigued. And it's hard to keep volunteers online when they're having to travel and then it's putting, it's depleting their resources. And, uh, my wife's an EMT and sometimes she's out three, four times a night. I mean, it's, these people, I take my hat off to them. So we need a solution. And what it is, we're trying to figure it out. We've got a problem, we're trying to solve it. Good question. And I encourage anybody that might have something on their mind, please come forward.
Hey, Mr. Crocker. I live in Kana. I'm writing down the figures, there's so many of them, thirty-nine cents for fifty cents for thousand, thousand. And, and when we were talking about how long already the last four years, six years, I knew, and then I got to thinking, um, RCW told you the max is fifty percent. So how often we change that, we're coming to pay on this course, it's only been. Uh, that, I mean, at some point they made it fifty cents. And how long before was it less than that? You kind of see where I'm going with that? Kind of mash up with that a little bit, it would make sense if we're not doing, take fifty cents, barely cut it. And it's already low and everybody disagrees with it, that's the way it is. Well, we need to stay up with it, but it moves up each time, it's a week, another four years, another ten years. I just want to mention that for, for a note.
Steve Cooper, Fire Chief Franklin Four. Um, one, can you repeat that? Who are you? You know, I, I appreciate you all coming together and, and trying to figure out how the support that the volunteers out there. Our, our, our pool to pick from in volunteers is pretty small. And what I'm seeing going on, especially in fire districts in the volunteer world, you get about six to eight years, pretty active volunteers. And they kind of start to taper off them. And, 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 and once they get to the point, they're done, they are done. It's not like they're going to leave for a year or two, take the break. They're not coming back. When they decide they're going to retire quit or, or, or go do other things, you don't get them back. And we're starting to burn up this pool. I'm pretty fortunate, we've been, we've been getting some younger folks there in Franklin Four signing on and stuff. But I'm going to burn that pool up pretty quick. And as I move on, um, got to take cognizance of that. Because if we do get down the road where we can get some paid staff and they're, they're out, they're still going to need the support of the volunteers. And if a bunch of them have already moved on to other things, then with that, it's going to be a positive thing.
And we've been told that, uh, if you have paid staff, it's easier to get volunteers. Because I've been told stories of the, uh, apprehension of getting into an ambulance and liability of being in that ambulance on a call if something goes wrong.
And there's so much organization and, and administration stuff that goes on that I'm supposed to be doing. No, I got to pick and choose what I can do. You know, train the guys, vote a fire call, do that kind of stuff. There's a lot more that goes on than just driving that red truck down the road in silence.
And I think you have another opportunity too.
Exactly.
Talk a little bit about Franklin County too. I'm the fire coach chief, with, with Holbeck and I do coaching. Um, you're right, we don't have a very big tax base. And we are very, very conservative. And I'm not trying to put a petty thing here or anything, but as you know, we're a long ways out there. I believe we're around seventy thousand dollar taxes a year. We are very, very conservative with our dollars that we do get. And I think we're damn good at our commissioners and our volunteers and the help that we put in for a lot of farmers out there. There's a lot of area to cover and we all put volunteer time. In fact, I have a truck in my shop right now that I'm putting my time and my dad on for my community. Because that's what I do. My dad was fire chief for forty-seven years. I have been, I don't know, twenty, I don't know, twenty years, pick over that. But we have all of us that work together in Franklin County. If you look at that map, we cover some of the toughest terrain. I'm not trying to say, hey, we're the biggest and that, but that's not what it's about. We're all here to help each other. But there's some bad terrain out there that I would, if you want any commissions, I'm going to get in the pickup, we'll go for it. And I'll bet half you, I'll bet, oh, you will get out before I get to that. I'm just saying that for a reason. We have older equipment that we've done very well to hold together. Nick Pos, hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand to upgrade equipment. We, we've been very fortunate and we have a lot of families that know how to keep things running. It takes right here. We, we picked a fire truck with a revenant. I've done it, you guys have seen it. Hey, we've done, we made it run when you got a fire that's blowing in the wind. But what we also have is older equipment and we do not have facilities for it. We have, my dad was fire chief and he started many, I believe fifteen. And I think our fire hall was built in fifteen years. And I remember my dad, about two brand new fire trucks, I wouldn't have thought of it. And they were about sixty-two years old. And those are the last news that we bought. So I'm just saying, we've been very conservative and we've been very tapped to hold together what we have. And we have some good commissioners, the volunteers are looking for grants, they're at the heart of it out there. And we don't have the tax base. And we do not have a facility to store this stuff in. I had two trucks and my phone, you have, you have a truck or two, you have a truck. Every one of these farmers out here, we store it, we just stream it to them. We do not have a facility available. Motor block building, the half our equipment building. So we have forty, I think, thirteen, there's thirteen vehicles. They're not going to fit, they're not going to fit in, they're not going to put them in the rain or in the office. We do base them out. So if you're looking at colodus for a place and a nice place to be, to train our firemen, we need some help. And I, I mean, I know I'm asked, everybody's here asking for a piece of the puzzle, but we're way behind in time. And I don't know what the answer is, but we need a lot of help to cover a lot of. And the EMS is the same way. We should be responding with a response truck, with these, help these individuals, using lift, using traffic control. We try to, but I live on a major highway. You know how many cars go by? I don't know how many it is, but a hell of a lot of the people being driven. There's a lot of traffic going out. And there's a lot of traffic goes out through the halls. But they don't understand how dangerous it is out there, as talked, we brought up earlier. There's a lot out there and, you know, how many people, how many people do you say they thought would go out there in a year? Hundred and eighty-some thousand, ten bucks a car, they're ahead. So, I mean, there it is, they're charging, get it. And the state's giving a lot of money. You know, there is a lot. And if any of you have driven the Blue's Falls, that's not an easy road to drive either. So there's a lot going out in our county and I would just appreciate the support. And I do have to admit, Cooper, Eric Moss, you've roused around the district. I think we're good at what we do because when it comes to help from Eric Moss at Cooper, uh, District Three, we've had some pretty big deals out there. Some rough ass things, all you guys are there like that. But we're fortunate in Franklin County, I think we did a damn good job, we've been showed, we've looked at it well. Just, we need to support. Thanks.
I, uh, so I appreciate you guys coming down. I, uh, one of your city council members here. And live here to provide, uh, citizens here and, you know, carry out here. But, uh, I, I tend to, the fire hall, she's just taking me down and showing me some trucks out there. And I'm sure, like, uh, more of a saying, all these trucks are parked out in the farm, you need money, you know, you need fixing. Anytime you take these trucks, fixing to the shop, you know, we're talking about hundred and fifty, hundred and thirty dollars an hour to fix. You know, we got a beautiful, ten-year-old truck in the shop there. Uh, the motor's been replaced and, uh, and that is just a passion, you know? Is that truck going to make a fire? Oh, we don't know. And so, yeah, we, we need to hope, uh, DOC is missing each of us. Because, uh, I think they need to put their fresh air in it. And so, yeah, and if I, just looking behind me, we're all, all of you are volunteers. I've been a volunteer for the search department in the county, I've been here for thirty-six years. And I don't regret it at all, that was my passion. And, uh, so, yeah, you know, at first, you used to probably appreciate it. This is until we started this, uh, this, uh, um, emergency respond dinner. And, uh, at least that way everybody gets to tell their story and about the department and appreciate, show appreciation for what we all do. Very lot of that, it's a passion that we have in us. And I think it, uh, we could keep going on this. Thank you.
Anybody else? I was wondering when you're.
I know, I really try hard. Um, so I'm Lori Hales, I'm the commissioner of the hospital district, as you all know me. Um, I want to say thank you guys for coming out here, it means a lot to us. Um, and, uh, you know, they're right, we all roll up our sleeves and get the job done. Um, and I would like to also say thank you to Pasco, they're a tremendous help for our EMTs and also for Fire District Three. And I've been a volunteer for almost thirty years, your wife. Um, and also to all of our fire districts for helping us, supporting us. So, uh, we do want to find a solution for our friends, family, neighbors at Fire District Two. And I'm glad you guys are, um, taking up this cause. I know, I called Commissioner Cook years ago about this same problem. And, um, it's still a problem.
Anybody else? We appreciate you all being here tonight. We're looking for a solution. And if there are any more comments from the commissioners, if you'd like to say anything.
I just want to say thank you to all the volunteers. I mean, that's something that you just, it's not readily available, I produce again. And I just want to say thank you to all the people that's, that stand up and, and help their community. Because without them, obviously, we could be in much, much worse conditions. And so, we need to find a solution. It's imperative that we get this, we get this fixed. And we need, I believe we need some staffing. Um, we can't just rely on volunteers for everything. And it's not fair to them. And, and, but I do just want to say thank you to all the volunteers out there.
So I'll just say ditto to what Commissioner Mullin just said about volunteers. And county's got a pretty strong reputation in that regard. And a lot of this wouldn't, couldn't happen without volunteers. There is something that didn't get discussed much tonight, and I would ask all of you, and especially those who stood up and spoke to, give a little bit more thought to as we go through this process. And that is, what are your priority needs? What do they cost? Maybe just start making some notes so that we can get a sense as to whether or not a levy would produce enough revenue to actually address those needs or if we need to find some other vehicle. And, uh, so it helps us with the initial stage of figuring out where, where money ought to go and whether there should be a stock formula or whether all the funds should go into a pool. And you get the commissioners together and they, they, uh, sort out those funds and distribute those funds locally based on needs. Since there is so much, uh, interoperability and, and cooperation between the districts, it might make more sense to pool them. And in one year, colodus gets this, this and this, and the next time it's another district. It's just another way of, of modeling the funds. But, uh, I would ask you just to think about what your real priorities are. And if you had money, what would you spend it on first?
Thanks.
And I'll add that Tuesday is our commissioners meeting. And we entertain any more comments at that time. We have two public comment periods. So if anybody has a brainstorm over the weekend, come on in and talk to us. Tuesday morning at nine o'clock at courthouse. If there's nobody else to publicly comment on this topic, we will adjourn the meeting. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.